Everybody here?
Not quite yet. Wally, we're still waiting on the other three board members.
Okay. Who's the applicant for 245 Center?
That would be Heather Kuzowski.
Oh, is this a different application for the same place?
It's for the definitive subdivision. However, it's a Form A application to adjust a lot line.
Oh, a lot line adjustment. That's easy. Oh, were they taking one, a little bit of land from the existing form?
There was some conversation about adjusting the way that the layout of the lot was situated and giving more land to the existing home instead of the new home.
Yeah, so that's just a lot line adjustment. That's easy. That's should meet everything. I haven't seen it yet, but that's right. And 18th Drive, there's a blast.
Yeah, that was, that was an older subdivision from 1985.
Right, and we have a bunch of these in the town. This is a free lot, right? There's, there's already a house on it, right?
There is not a lot on that back lot.
So what are we releasing it to?
There's a restrictive covenant on the lot that does not allow the lot to be built upon.
Eighty-five. Who owns it? Same, is there in a butter that owns it?
I believe it's the same gentleman who took it through the permitting process and/or a subsequent company that would let to that company.
In 1985?
I don't believe it's the same exact owner, but I do believe that there's some relation to the same exact owner.
Oh, so they try to build on it?
They are trying to release the lot from covenant so that they can sell the lot.
Is it a, is it a building lot?
It is. It's actually a lot that has 200 feet of frontage and over 40,000 square feet of area.
Yeah, it's just going to meet the zoning at the time of the application. Is there a new Form A with it?
There's no Form A. They're not subdividing the lot. They're not doing anything to the lot. They just want to release the lot from covenant.
All right. I believe that was, if memory serves me right, that that lot was being held for completion of a couple of things on the subdivision. That's from the day that, that's what they were doing.
But there's been some new developments as well, so we can get into that in a little detail.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good to know, see what's going on with that. That's why I remember that one because we had a little issue with that. What was the last name on that?
For the owner?
Yeah.
Kevin Murphy was the original owner.
Okay. Wasn't sure if that was one of Rocco's subdivisions or not. Hey.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. So the October 6th meeting will come to order at 7:05. Do I have a motion?
No motions.
Second it.
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Wally.
Aye.
Jim? Okay, aye too. Tom Planner with the update on the remote meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This open meeting of the Grovan Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Grovan Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom Planner. Okay. Discussion and polls voting. First one on the agenda is 123 Seven Star Road. Review and approve November 5th, 2019 definitive subdivision application and site work performed prior to the plan endorsement.
Mr. Chair, if I may make an introduction to this particular issue. This was on the last agenda of the planning board and it was called into attention that the site was actually being developed at that point in time. So the board voted to table the endorsement of the plan. So we contacted the owner and it was found that Kendall Construction was performing site work at that particular site. However, it was a misunderstanding between the homeowner and the sale of the property from the former owner. You're all familiar with the Petraska family. So there was some miscommunication in terms of the endorsement of the plan. The other thing to note is that at that point in time, this particular subdivision was approved and a plan was endorsed and recorded at at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. However, that subdivision was never built and the subdivision plan had expired. So they came back before the planning board to refile and go through that entire process again. So again, between the miscommunication back and forth and the complexity of the subdivision, since it technically our lot, the owners felt, or the owners thought that they had the ability to continue with site work. That that was not the case. They ceased work immediately. They had been in communication with the planning department. They had been working with the conservation commission. And they have submitted a letter that was included in your packets explaining the situation from their point of view. And they have, it looks like they're present on the call this evening as well as their attorney. If the board has any specific questions.
Hey, um, does anybody have any, from the board, does anybody have any questions on the project?
Yeah, I just, I'm familiar with the project and my only question would be what's left that needs to be done on our end or their end to commence the operation. You know, there's usual, the surety, the forms and some kind of you know, tripart or something put up. What's left on that checklist and how fast that need for it to be executed?
So the approved memorandum of decision only included the requirements that the owner have at liability insurance of up to $2 million, $250,000, which they have submitted proof of. The only other requirements of that particular decision was that they get the plan endorsed and recorded as well as the memorandum of decision and that they meet the monitoring for the subdivision requirements as per the subdivision rules and regulations. There was no surety or anything listed in the approved memorandum of decision.
Okay, and, and so where are we with that? We just were, we're still just holding up a signature on the new definitive. Is that it for the recording or is that done now?
No, that would be what this vote is for the board.
Yeah, that would be the vote for this. That's all it is, is just a vote and a sign. That's it.
Can we hear from the owner?
Yes.
I'll speak first. Our attorney Jenna Lovey represent the owners. They're on the call tonight as well for, for any questions. I'm sure the members of the board are aware of this property. Like you said, Rebecca did a pretty good job of explaining the circumstances, I'm sure ahead of this. What we're asking for tonight is just to vote to endorse the definitive plan that was approved on November 5th of 2019. It was subsequently recorded in January of 2020. However, the I'm sorry, the decision was recorded, however, the definitive plan was presented to the, to the meeting by the previous owners, but was not endorsed or reported. When the owners purchased this property in May of this year, the information provided to them was that everything was properly recorded. And in fact, this was a condition of, of the sale of the property in May. So as soon as they discovered that the decision was not recorded, I mean, sorry, the plan was not recorded as required by the decision, they ceased all work and are, are looking for the board to vote to endorse so that they can get it recorded and back to Rebecca.
I don't have an issue with anything.
Now, this is just a single family lot, right?
Yeah, it's a single family subdivision lot. Yep.
Yeah, that's right. Any relation to the Petraskas on the sale?
No.
The new, no.
All right, just a curiosity question. Okay.
I think it was just this communication between the sale, the sale of the lot and the new owners.
So that's, that's never happened before at all. So
Oh, really? Yeah, okay, yes, right.
No, that's, that's great. And, and just hats off to the new residents of town that, that, you know, jumped on this right away. And, and this happened sometime, but you guys, I think you did the right thing coming in and Rebecca did a heck of a job and your attorney, I guess, just getting sent. So this is proper what you're going through. Thank you very much for doing this and I don't have any issues with this.
No. Right protocol, definitely. And they did stop it all, all site work and everything.
Yeah, Larry's an above board guy, so I'm sure he, he was a little surprised too. But we got a good man up there too, so.
Let's make a motion.
Yeah, motion, motion endorse.
Yes.
So motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Wally, yes?
Yes, yeah.
Jim?
Of course.
Brad?
Yes.
Yes, so congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you to Rebecca who was so instrumental in making all of this happen smoothly. So, thank you.
Again, well.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda is 245 Center Street Form A application.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the has an approved definitive subdivision plan for two lots. Has an existing single family home. However, no construction has taken place on the second lot. In collaboration with the potential new buyer for the lot with a single family home, they would like to purchase more of the land associated with such. And therefore, the owner is looking for the board to approve a Form A application to adjust the lot line and to give more of that area to the existing house lot. I did confer with town council on this issue just based upon the fact that there was a definitive subdivision plan and technically, frontage does not exist for the new lot because the road has not been built yet. And therefore, they only have the area. Town com, town council did state that it, they could file for a lot line adjustment. However, the planning board should make sure that the subdivision way providing frontage is either completed or there is sufficient security in place to complete it before endorsing the plan. Can share with you the plan on the, would like to see that.
Yeah, that's good.
If you could pull it up, that'd be great.
So what's on the, what's on the line now for for a bond or a sureties?
Right now, the decision states that it would be $50,000.
I forget, how much are they, how much are they paving?
They're only paving up, up to the top of the hill, I think.
To the fire, so the fire truck could turn around. And what do they want to, what do they want to cut out?
So if you can follow my cursor right here, can you see the cursor on the screen?
Yep.
Oh, I see.
The lot line comes down here.
Yeah.
And they would like to create this lot line right here. So it would cut off this area, parcel A, to be combined with the existing house. So not per se, they're just removing this lot line and putting it over here.
It's, it's an unbuildable lot because of the, you can't put a house there.
And that's your property, correct? All that property is yours.
Yep, that's all our property. Right. And we, we were not supposed to pave any of it, just so you know. I just, I'm sorry, I was muted by accident. I didn't realize that.
I thought we had, I thought there was an agreement to pave something for the fire truck to access the first portion of it.
No, we're not paving. That was not part of the agreement.
They had to at least pave 10 feet in.
Okay, that was, that's news to me.
No, that's always been any driveway cut or anything. Always been, that was Bob O'Callen's big thing.
Okay. I don't think it was a decision. I don't remember seeing that.
All right, well, we can have Rebecca go back and yeah, so, but.
This gives the new homeowner of our house that added buffer to the neighbors on that side and it squares off both the lots as you can probably see from this plan.
As far as I'm concerned, it's your property. You can do whatever you want with it. I'll give how much of it you want away, me.
Thank you. So we, we are going to have a $50,000 bond in place and we already have a $2 million liability bond or policy, policy as well for the driveway and the construction. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, we're just, we're just studying the plan right now.
I'm gonna digest what's good.
Yep. So.
Yeah, just want to see if the memorandum if it states how far that's got to be paved up. And then Heather, you haven't sold your primary house yet, have you?
Yeah, it's under agreement. We're moving. Um, we're, we're moving, we're closing around the 15th.
That's, okay. That's fine. You don't have to answer him, so.
No, that, well, the question is if, if they're still the landowner, the homeowner, they can do whatever they want with the land. And I understand what Rebecca said on that. So they're adding the piece to square that off, but if they had already sold the property, then not the owners anymore.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't passed paper while.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just clarifying that. That's all. And you guys are still going to build and move into the new house?
Um, yes, that's the plan right now, but we're getting tired of everything. It's just costing a lot of money, way more than we thought.
So does that mean this may just be sold as a approved plan?
Plus, there's a possibility, but I think we're, every day it changes if you talk to my husband. He's just so this process. I'm, I'm like gung ho, but he's not as gung ho.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not an easy process for anyone. So it's, it's just the way it goes. But, but okay, so as soon as we get a note on that, how far to pave, that's the only question I have on this. Just to make sure it's in the memorandum. Is Rebecca looking?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, yep.
Yeah, because if, if this does get sold and, and that's fine, but it's just got to be in the memorandum so that, that question doesn't come up with whoever's building it.
So the first.
That, that's a different parcel, Wally. So she's
Well, no.
Right. We're not talking about her property which she wants to build upon and put in the road going to her new dwelling. All we're talking about is her giving up a parcel of her own property to the new owners just to square it off so that they can feel more comfortable, more privacy, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, they're kind of
Yeah, I'm just following up with what council mentioned. And if, and remember, and that's fine because she owns both parcels right now. But if the other, if the new parcel with the new subdivision gets sold off, the new party has to know that they got to pave so far up. So that's why I'm just questioning that because we just, we just had the last application before us where a few things dropped in the sale. Not that Heather would ever do that because she's a real estate agent, but but it happened. Yeah, it happened.
Right, but we're not talking the same. What she's now going ahead and ask for approval, which she already has, to build this primary home of hers. So, right, but I mean, but your intention is to sell this second parcel in the future, correct? But it builds a house and live there.
Well, our plan is to live there, but if our neighbors make it absolutely impossible for us to live, I think we will.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then you do know, like he was saying, that we do have to put in that mandatory 10 feet of driveway.
Okay, yeah.
But that's, that's fine, but on the plan, it said a full gravel driveway. I just
What did the fire chief go? Didn't he, didn't he put a letter in saying so much had to be paid to get in?
No, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, I, I thought there was something in there about getting the truck up for a little bit.
No, it was the slope more than anything. Yep.
It was a 12%, wasn't it or something?
Yeah, we, we, we increased it firm, but um, it was more the slope than paving.
Wasn't there a cutaway that they wanted to do off to the side? I forget the trim that they used?
Yeah, you're right.
Put the
Have to have a circular drive for them at the end so they can That's no problem. We're planning on that anyway.
I would on, I mean, I, I would make a motion to approve the the 245.
Yeah, the lot line, I don't have a problem with the lot line adjustment. That's easy. It's, it's just, once that gets cuts loose and now they, they're not going to be the owner. It's under agreement. So in a, in a couple of weeks or whenever it is, that's gone. And so then, then we're left with just the new subdivision that could possibly end up in somebody else's hands whenever. Okay, and so that, that just has to be, the integrity of that subdivision has to be intact to make sure that everything, that there's no loose ends. And then it can do whatever it wants.
All they're doing is breaking off the, off the lot, though.
Yeah, yeah, the lot line.
Memorandum we gave them, they have to follow, so.
So question for you guys. So let's say that she sells the second lot. She decides not to build a house. Whoever buys the property off her, who's going to build the house, has to come before us in order to get the approval. So we're going to enter that.
It's, no, because it's already approved.
Okay.
It's already approved.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll have to fill out all the paperwork.
Okay.
And all the forms and the transfer. But, and that's why the only question that I have is just to make sure that since we're, we're questioning now. Gee, do we all remember what was supposed to happen with that, you know, whether it's 10 feet, 100 feet, or whatever the heck it is on the paving. We just want to make sure that's there. So we can nail that down. And there's no question whenever either Heather builds it with Andy or somebody else does. But that doesn't come up and we go, hey, where's the 10 feet, 100 feet? And it's not in there. So that, that's why I just want to nail it down. I have no problem with the lot line adjustment. That's, that's easy.
Remember, the subdivision plan that we already have in place, right? So what you're saying is that's something we have to do no matter what. That's just like, everyone has to do that in town?
Right, yeah.
Okay, my contract right now that, but if it's a subdivision, it has to have it?
What's that? Heather, say that again. I'm sorry, you were broken up.
So our current driveway does not have 10 feet of pavement?
Yes.
But that's just because it's a driveway?
No, any driveway, everything right now, when, there was, Bobby put in a thing when he was the road commissioner. Any curb cut or anything off a road need to be paved at least 10 feet in.
Okay.
A subdivision, a driveway or anything.
So her original property was grandfathered in prior to that. That's why she has gravel going into her property.
Exactly, exactly. Her, her property was already built. This, so I just remember it because I had to do it myself a couple of times.
Okay.
And I don't know where the language is or whatever, but I mean, that's, that's, that's for the planning board to decide. How's that? And we'll, we'll look at it later, or, but the, the lot line adjustment is fine for me.
That's fine.
Yeah, the lot line adjustment, we can move that i- if you want to apply the motion to move that, but we do have to just I, on the record tonight for the minutes, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, whether it's 10 feet, 100 feet, or whatever it is. We, there was a distance of pavement and just before we leave the meeting tonight, just want to make sure that that's clear and on the record for the, for whatever.
Brad, do you remember, I mean, you've been around a long time. I mean, do you remember that? Bobby putting that in somewhere?
Oh, I do. It was, it was for the integrity of the road.
Exactly. It was the integrity for the road, for, for plowing and everything.
Right.
It was
Yep.
Yeah.
It was still coming in and out.
Yes, stop, stopping and everything.
I do remember you guys talk about it at the meeting, but I do not remember it being in the decision from reading it a bunch of times, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing that I
Well, Heather, we were still debating the driveway and the length because you had all that granted that you didn't know what you were going to do with it yet. So there was still a gray area that we haven't completed yet. So what all, all we're trying to say, I guess, is I just understand at one point.
10 feet is not a big deal. I mean, that's fine. If that's what you want.
I mean, that, this is all your new subdivision, not, not your driveway going into the new, your old house, Heather.
Right. No, that's fine. No, 10 feet is, that's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's a mandatory 10 feet. If, if there's, if the fire chief threw something in there or something else that was, that was longer. There was a stretch of gravel, but I think there was a, a good sized stretch of pavement, but I don't want to hold a number to that till we see it. But anyway, let's, you want to fly the motion?
Wait a second. Rebecca, do you, do you remember anything? I mean, I know you haven't been here really long, but you've been here somewhat and you work with Bobby. Do you remember anything about that?
I do remember them, him stating specifically that he put something in place to, like you said, prohibit the gravel from running off onto the roadway and causing issues on our management and things of that nature. So I do remember that being an issue. And with this particular project, I know there was talk about the fire access to the house up at the top and the length of the driveway and the 12% slope and the turnaround for the truck at the top, since it wasn't necessarily the typical cul-de-sac. But I don't see anything on the plan that calls out for pavement just for gravel as we have been sitting here and talking about it. So I don't see anything in the plan that mentions it being paved.
Can you guys just let me know when you want that to go in, at what stage? Can you be specific so we don't mess that up?
That would be, that would be at the end of your project when your heavy equipment's done and you're moving in.
Oh, okay.
So you, so you don't tear it up, you know, going in and out.
I think it's the fire chief's letter that dictated any restrictions because he had to have the emergency equipment access and he has the priority on that and authority to dictate it. So I, I think that with that, if there's any restriction, that's where it would be, other than a mandatory 10 feet.
Well, I think the issue again is the fact that there is no access to the lot if you go through the subdivision process and you allow for the building of the lot because then you, you are creating a non-buildable lot. There's no frontage and there's no So I think that the reason that the town council said, well, it's, it's not that they can't go through the process. It's that the planning board needs to make sure that the frontage is either completed or there is sufficient security in place to complete before endorsing the plan. So I don't know whether or not the planning board wants to take any action as to making sure that the security is in place prior to endorsing the plan or whether or not they just want to endorse the plan. It is entirely up to the planning board to decide. But we also need to make sure that the vote is contingent upon a submittal of a final plan that bears the engineer's stamp and is not a draft plan.
Okay, you have, now Rebecca, the final plan with the new lot line adjustment?
Yep, you dropped that off yesterday. So the meeting is now. So the meeting is now and I just want to make sure that the board recognizes that the plan has not officially been received by the department.
Oh, so we haven't even clocked it in yet. All right, um, is T E C on the, on the call?
No.
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 All right, um.
He's seen it though. I've sent it to him, I believe.
All right. So, so do we need to float a motion right this second on this or should we?
Yeah, because she, she has, she has a, um, closing on her, on a house. So we, we get at least float a motion on.
Lot line.
Adjustment for.
Yeah, let's do that now, so.
All right. So, so is there language that we could put into or on, man, I'm trying to think of where it would go Rebecca. Uh, because it's a, it's a separate set. Once we, once we endorse the plan, this, we got two, we got two parcels cut off now. And I understand what council was saying, but to, to check the box, um, the subdivision wouldn't become, you know, wouldn't become a, a lot to sign off without frontage, which isn't, it's accessing from the new road and I get all that. But that's fairly typical also for single lot subdivisions. Um, there's just no occupancy permit ever issued and that's kind of down the line a little bit. So that would.
There's two options. There's either that the board approved the Form A, uh, with the, the final Form A bearing the engineer's stamp or the planning board of the endorsement of the plan contingent upon receipt of the $50,000. So you would not sign the plan until you receive $50,000, which would be the bond that is established for the development. So I believe those would be your two options.
Couldn't you just sign occupancy permit if I don't pave the beginning of the driveway?
Not just the beginning of the driveway, it's the whole road that derives the frontage.
The whole road.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not just the 10 feet.
There's no way that you can condition a Form A application. So you either approve it or you deny it. So the approval is based upon the receipt of funds, which would be sufficient in terms of what town council had advised.
So what, that's where I was asking Pete, uh, because I don't even remember what we, what we put in for, what was the surety required for the subdivision?
That was $50,000.
That was what on it? So, okay, so based on council's input onto that, and I agree with it. I understand exactly where they're coming from. They, they nailed this one down pretty good. Uh, so the surety, the funds has to be in place to build the right of way, uh, to derive the frontage for the subdivision itself and the house lot prior to giving away the land on the endorsement. So Heather, it looks like you gotta come up with a, a surety for the new subdivision. Um, prior to the endorsement.
I already have a $1,000 surety, Wally, and I've got a $2 million liability policy on top of that.
Well, the liability is for something else, but how much is, how much is the surety in place?
50,000.
Oh, it's already in place.
That's incorrect. We do not have a surety for $50,000 as of right now.
Well, you will have it before we start. We're working on it.
And that's what I'm saying, that the board can endorse the, the, once the board can endorse the plan once they receive the surety that she claims that she has.
Okay, Dee, Dee, Dee at Pangry Insurance is working on it. I don't know what's taking so long, but, um, hopefully I'll have it tomorrow.
All right. So what's the, okay, so fly a motion to endorse the.
I'm gonna make a mo, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to apply the application as long as before, as long as we have the $50,000 in place before we sign the plan and she can pass on papers.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. I second that.
Yeah.
So motion.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, all right, Wally, you said yes?
Yes.
Brad, you said yes?
Correct, yes.
And I said yes, okay.
I will do my best to get this to you guys right away.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome.
Good night. Thank you.
You too.
Um, I also, we need to get a construction meeting together.
All right, well, that, well, that will be another time. You, you have to schedule with Rebecca, please.
Okay, have a great night, guys. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is 8 Dana Drive, Lot 4, request for a lot release.
Mr. Chair, this one is a, um, an older subdivision that was approved in 1985. There was a restrictive covenant that was placed on Lot 2 and Lot 5 back in 1985 of the approved subdivision for the construction of municipal ways, services and the connection to town water. Um, I reviewed the documents and it appears that the planning board released Lot 2 and did not require the owner to fulfill the requirements of the covenant, nor was a building permit held and a house was built in 1993. Then further, under Master and Our Law, Chapter 82, Section 21 through 24, the town accepted Dana Drive at a town meeting in 1999. So therefore we own the way. Um, based upon the fact that the planning board released the lot 2 and did not require them to fulfill any obligation. And then seeing that the town accepted the road and we now own the road, um, I do believe that we would need to release the lot.
I agree.
Yes, I do too.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the question on, on this one, guys. So I, I was around for Dana Drive and I'm trying to remember why this lot was held. And I think it was held on, in a, don't have the paperwork in front of me on this one. But I believe that the developer may have had another subdivision in the town. Um, and I'm trying to remember who the parties were at the time. Thanks for putting that up, Rebecca.
Well, that was 35 years ago.
That was what?
35 years ago.
Yeah, it, no, I'm, I'm not referring to that part. It was, it, I, I think it had something to do, it's a little more complex. But, but I, we can get into that later on a, on a side meeting. I don't think it's going to hold this thing up. And I understand this and, um, and I'm just trying to figure out, so this particular lot already has frontage on Dana Drive. It's in the back, isn't it, on the left hand side up there?
You can see it's right here on Lot 4.
Yeah.
Back, so it's got two, the frontage and it's got 42,178 square feet of area.
Yeah, so we got a, we got a public way accepted by the town. And who is the engineer on this one? Is it show down there? Can you see that? Atlantic, okay. Um, onto that. So existing right, okay, to release the lot. So everything, um, I believe everything was, was done on it, but there, there was another reason on the hold. I'll explain that later, but not, not right now.
Well, that's, that's a duplex lot too.
That's, that's what I'm looking at. It, it's, it could be a duplex lot. It certainly got the frontage for it.
It does meet requirements for duplex or two family based on the zoning.
Right, exactly. So is the applicant here? What's their plan for it?
Uh, it does not appear that the applicant is present this evening. Um, I got a request from Jack Kelty, um, an attorney in Peabody. I did provide him all of the log on information and told him to the board, but it does not appear that he is present.
All right. And so that, so the theory is it's a, the, who, the original developer owns the lot still from 1985 and he's looking to get it released to sell it to build a single family dwelling?
Um, there has been no talk about what the building on that particular lot would be. Um, the lot does also, uh, have, uh, back tax, taxes on the land. So there are also other measures that anybody would need to.
They, they'd have to go through the town to pay the back taxes and everything.
Right. Are they trying to sell it?
I believe, yes, it was listed and, and now that there's been multiple interested parties, they're looking to release the lot so that they can move forward.
I don't know why people are talking about this so much when I don't have the owner of the property in front of me so they can answer some of the questions or kind of give a little more.
You know what? I, I don't think we can hold it up because we've already released all the other lots and we hope. I think we should make motion to release the lot. And.
So there's no ramifications to releasing the lot? If you're comfortable with that, I'll, I'll back you.
Yeah, no, there's no ramifications because the town owns the road.
Okay.
And it made, it meets other requirements. It meets.
Okay.
Requirements, so.
Okay, Bob, just for the, just to get it on the record here though, that.
Yep.
I was around when Dana Drive, when that lot was released, the other one, the house was already built.
I, I was too, Wally. I was, I was.
No, I mean on the board.
Yep.
Yeah.
I wasn't on the board, but I was a builder and then I knew what was going on, so, yeah.
Okay, so, so we, so the other lot was held. I don't think it was because of back taxes at the time. It was because the developer screwed the town of Groveland on another section of the town. Okay, and they hanging on to that lot to try to get some kind of payment going to complete both subdivisions. So I don't know what happened in that transaction past that, but that's why that lot was held and it was held on to. My only question is, we, we have this from up and is the town, uh, finance director uh, aware that this is coming up for release? Because they can put a hold on it. And if, if, does anybody know if we got a green light from them on that?
Um, the, uh, tax collector, excuse me, the assistant tax collector, I have been in, in communications with her and she does state that they, they do own taxes on the property and that based upon the amount of taxes that they owe on the property, no, um, agreement can take place until the town is played, uh, paid.
Paid, right.
So, so why can we, can we hold until we get a letter from the, uh, from the town clearing its release? Because once we release it.
Even if we release the lot, they still have an.
They, they still can't, they can't, still can't sell it until.
They can't still, they can't sell it without, you can't pass.
Exactly.
Yeah, but that doesn't, wait, that doesn't mean that anyone can go on that lot and do anything. That they could do exactly what they want. I mean, somebody could clear cut it, somebody could start doing something, they'll get stopped and they're not going to be able to sell it. But, but I, for just for clarity sake, if there's not a rush job on it, I, I think we ought to get a green light from the tax people saying, hey, is it okay if we release this? And we send them your direction for the back taxes? I just think it's a protocol thing. Good.
I, I think you can release it and we bought a lot. And, and when it comes to, um, the closing, that's when they catch the taxes. The people didn't pay the taxes on the other lot and that came up. So at the closing, it'll come up. For the town, I don't think Sam's going to issue a building permit without the taxes being paid. Am I right, Rebecca?
They won't, they wouldn't even be able to pass, if they try to sell it, it wouldn't even be able to pass papers on it.
Yeah, right. So the original owner could go in and clear cut it with no, no penalty is what I'm talking about.
Isn't the property do as he wants?
Well, not if, not if it's not released. But there was a reason why it was held and it was held because of some other stuff that was going on. But I'm just asking for clarity in writing from the tax people. Can we float a motion to release it pending a green light from the tax office?
I don't think you can do that legally.
Sure we can. We just, if she says, if they, they, they come back and they say, hey, you're cleared to go, then it's endorsed. And if not, we, we just have a restriction until the taxes are paid or whatever they're doing. But we're not in control of that department, but we are controlled for the town. And that's why this was, this was held up, um, in the first place. I'm just asking for clarity. That's it. And if she says tomorrow, oh yeah, that's, that's fine. We'll catch them on the other end and that's okay. So if we have a pending motion to endorse once the tax department greenlights it, we're all set. We should be able to get that letter or, or email confirmation tomorrow.
Rebecca?
If that's what the board would need to motion, then the board.
Yeah, thanks Rebecca.
Yeah. I, I, I really think, I really think we should just make a motion to release the lot and then.
I, I don't have a problem with that except for the fact that we know that there's a concern and there is, there are back taxes, which is not a department.
I, I, I know there's. Right, exactly, Brad.
Where's the planning board? I'm not the tax collector.
Well, yeah. So.
But we all work for the town and the reason why we hold things in surety is to make sure that the town does get whacked with putting in a road, which is exactly what happened more than half a dozen times in this town. Okay, and this is, this I believe is one of those instances, even though we accept it.
Everything, everything is all set in stone now, so.
Well.
The town owns the road.
Right.
We own the road.
The road.
So it can't really.
So I mean, if, if they do something, we could put Jersey barriers across it like Bobby's done before.
The covenant's about the road, right? And we own the road. So I don't think there's anything that you can actually hold. And the tax collector's another department and they won't issue a building permit. And I think the guy, if he wanted to clear cut it, he would have clear cut it years ago.
I, I think what you're missing is that I believe the town had to step in and accept the road the way it was because it wasn't done, along with a couple of others in the town at the time. So we do own the road. I agree. Uh, I'm not sure if, what that cost the town, but that's why that was put in place. One was released because the house was already up. Okay, and this left this particular one open. So the motion I, I would like to fly is, is to endorse just upon green light from the town tax people that it's okay to sign. That's it. No, no other restrictions. They'll, they'll collect whatever they need to do. But I don't want to have somebody come back around to the board go, hey, you knew about this and you released the lot. So it's just a clarity check.
That, that's fine, but it's just, I think it's an extra step that we don't have to take because it's not our department. The town already has a flag on it. And you can't, they're not going to issue a permit. They're not going to be able to sell it until the taxes are paid.
Hey.
Yeah, but we can't endorse it tonight anyway. We can fly the motion, vote the motion and we'll have an answer by tomorrow morning. Yeah, it's okay to sign. Or, or at least it makes the tax department aware again that, uh, hey, we're cutting this thing loose. And then, and then the, the tax department's going to have to go and put a lien on.
You know what, there's legal, there's legal, I don't know the definition of the legal, but there's precedence that you have, you've got to release the lot. I don't, the taxes, they don't fall in our department.
Right. No, I agree. I agree. I didn't say that. I'm just asking for clarity. That's all.
Rebecca was clear. I think we got the clarity and I'm not, I don't want to be argument. I don't want to argue about it, but I just, I think if you read it, I think we're here to release the lot. We have no ownership, you know, the town has ownership of the road. There's nothing you can hold it. It's already been accepted. It's a lot.
Rebecca, what was the accusation?
Well, to answer my question was answered for me and that is there is no ramifications. As long as there's no ramifications, our hands are clean.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, that's exactly.
So.
That, that's why it was happening.
I'm going to make a motion to re, release the lot.
All right. Okay, uh, fly the motion and go ahead. I'll, I'll vote for it.
Anybody checking it? Brad or Jim?
Second. I, you know what? Hold on. You could, it's, it's fine, but it's unnecessary. How about that, Wally?
All right, right, I agree.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't want to get in an argument about it and sit here and talk about it for, you know, 35, 40 minutes. So.
I know, so. Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Yeah, well, I made a motion. I asked for a second. That's all I'm asking for.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is on the table to release the lot. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye, Brad.
I'm not yet.
Okay, Wally?
Aye, yeah.
Okay, so. Motion to release the lot. Thank you. So, uh, next thing is, um, on the agenda is 895 Salem Street. Vote to approve and accept a draft decision.
Mr. Chair, I included a drafted decision in the packets that I sent over to you on Thursday. Um, I did share that drafted decision with the applicant and his team as well and did receive confirmation that they, um, were approved of the drafted decision as drafted. In that, uh, decision also included a bond estimate that was established by T E C. And that estimate was also included in your packets for your review. Um, so I did provide in the packet as Wally had, uh, requested at the last meeting, the menu, uh, items of conditions that the board can, uh, include or typically had included in the past decisions. Um, so I didn't know if the board members had a chance to review and/or approved of the decision as drafted or wanted to amend and add any additional conditions.
Rebecca, what was the, I, I opened it and then I just, I forgot. What was the bottom out?
I will pull it up for you right now.
Yeah, that's the only, I, I forget that one too, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you.
For $50,000.
Then the other question, land disturbance?
Right. Anybody have any questions on the, um, draft decisions?
Say, I'm looking up, I see the draft minutes, I don't see the decision, though, I think I'm missing something there.
It did include as well, um, the vote that the board took in regards to the parking, and I also included recommendations and conditions and, um, around a, a change or expansion in use or tenants for additional parking and additional site review. Um, I have included conditions that were, uh, suggested and/or required by departments such as the fire department, um, water department. Um, uh, there was some signage requirements that are dictated in our zoning bylaw, so I kind of did a, an all-encompassing, uh, condition there. And then specifically because this is located in the aquifer protection district, I did, in fact, um, put in the condition, uh, some of the areas of concern, um, and items, uh, to be stored at the site and what items are specifically prohibited, um, just because it's a kind of catch-all to make sure that they are aware of the sensitivity of the site and the location to our drinking water.
Hey, Rebecca, just, uh, I don't have a copy of that draft decision, I have, I have all the minutes and I have the, um, the agenda, but I did not get that attachment.
If you click on the, the link that's in the email, it has all of the documents.
It has everything, yeah.
Does it?
It has everything, Wally.
In my one.
And just gonna grab that.
Rebecca, was there a land disturbance on that, Joe?
Yes, this is for a site plan approval in the stormwater management and land disturbance permit. Um, there was a question as to whether or not it would trigger a special permit under the offer. However, uh, based upon the activity and the removal of soil, um, we believed at the last meeting, and T E C recommended that it would go against the intent uh, based upon what the bylaw was requiring and what the project was actually producing.
Right, that, they were, weren't, yeah, exact, I remember that conversation.
I did note that in finding a fact so that moving forward, we wouldn't have an issue, and that you look at your screen, that's what you will see right here in regards to the bylaw section requirement.
Oh, looks good.
Yep.
Okay, I just found it, so, um, it was in the other piece over here, just looking at.
And to, I think she did a pretty good job.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, and thanks for including the, um, uh, the menu list in it. Did you add anything from there, Rebecca? That.
One of the menu items that were listed in that particular list, uh, pertain to subdivisions and not necessarily commercial sites. So some of them are relative, but not exact.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, and this is where we can add to that, um, particular menu. At some, at some point, as things come up, they just get cut and pasted into that, so, um, it, they can be front and center for the next, uh, special permit or something else that requires. And I don't have an issue with it here, looking at it. Um, so I, I'll fly the motion.
I read it over the, I read it over this one, and I, I had no issue with it.
Yeah.
I, I, do I have a motion to, uh, to accept the draft decision?
Yeah, so motion.
Eighty-nine, eighty-five Salem Street?
Yeah, so motion.
Second it?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye, Brad.
Yeah, Brad, yeah, and Wally.
Aye.
Okay. Great. All set, thank you.
Okay. So, what else you have, approval of minutes?
Yeah, approval of minutes, uh, September 15th, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, uh, so Brad?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Wally?
Aye.
Yeah, Bob, yeah, aye, okay, um, before we leave, uh, Jim would like to have a few minutes to, um, say a few words, go ahead, Jim.
As a member of the planning board and, and a homeowner of the beautiful town of Groveland, I just want to say, and I'm sure everybody in this room occurs, um, like to keep my condolences for the horrific accident of that young woman that happened last week. And I just want to say, you know, um, my heart goes out to her and her family, and, uh, if there's anything we can do, be more than happy to help, but my condolences goes out, my thoughts impressed.
Here, here.
Here, here, yes. Um, Rebecca, do you have anything else to add?
Yes.
Got a schedule?
Yeah, I, I do want to, um, ask about the next meeting. Um, I don't, uh, necessarily have anything upcoming right now. I do know that as we, um, we went through the preliminary process with 106 King Street, so I believe they will be coming forward with a definitive plan, but they have not filed as of date. Um, I also believe there may be another Form A application coming in, but I have not received anything, and then potentially another definitive subdivision plan for Seven Star Road. Um, but again, they, they haven't filed either. So our next, uh, meeting, I don't necessarily think we need to have that meeting in this, the third, uh, Tuesday of October, and that would bring us to the first week of November, and that is actually November 3rd, which is election day. Uh, we cannot hold a public hearing on that date. So I would suggest that we, um, reconvene on the second, uh, excuse me, the third Tuesday of November, which would take us to November 17th, and if something, uh, was to come in, in terms of, uh, an application, I could obviously, uh, let you all know, and we could schedule something if it was necessary or, or time-sensitive for one of the projects that's going on right now. Um, however, I don't necessarily think that there's anything that would require us to meet.
Yep, that's good.
All right.
The 17th.
Good to me.
So, uh, so you're saying no, uh, November 17th, then?
So no meeting on October, um, 20th, and no meeting on November 3rd, and then a meeting on November 17th.
17th, yep.
Yep.
Got a vacation.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
All in favor?
Aye, Brad.
Yes.
Aye.
All right, we vote, I have a motion and second it at 7:59, guys, be safe, and we'll talk to you later. Rebecca, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
For watching at home, good night.
Yes.